of the city of New Brunswick, to see their first and now here in all the way. And the three ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, in reference to the Paul Robinson Boulevard. And number four, a capital ordinance providing for various general capital improvement and acquisition scheme. And by the city of New Brunswick, we have an appeal set settlement there for the eighteen six point nine million therefore to pay for the cost of all. We have ordinances on first rate, and we wanted an ordinance to grant enclosure into the city of New Brunswick right away to go first. This is called installation of an emergency cell phone station through the city of New Brunswick. Number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick. This is related to adding new substantial parts. Three, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick. This is to add elements to it. Four, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick. This is related to making the crosswalk, and this is their first time this time. Another five, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick. Police piece, more some work there. And this is for the two zones not to be adopted. We have resolutions one to agree, one of the agenda amendments, two, applicable rules to filter a reasonable meeting tax sales certificates, four, applicable questions for closing five workers. This is not for Tony. Five, applicable questions for street closing and use of city sidewalk. Requested by workers in the recent twenty two point yards. Six, applicable amendment of resolution zero six twenty three twelve. The resolution to write a motion around nine thousand sixty five dollars and six cents. Number seven, applicable amendment of resolution zero five two three point requested by the state's foundation. Eight, applicable questions for street closing and use of city property requested by the city market. Nine, applicable questions for use of city property and sidewalk requested by local rights and worship partnership. Ten, applicable questions for street closing requested by Alfredio Fontano, Roman Catholic Church, and mandala del señor de los vinos, barroque de nuestro señorretado. Eleven, authorized tax collector to transfer payments from several tax and community accounts. Twelve, authorized to refund to John Daniel Tanami in the amount of three thousand four hundred and twenty five eighty three. Thirteen, advice and consent to the appointment of municipal court chief just of the city of New Brunswick name. This is James Hobish. Fourteen, applicable authorization to advertise for installation of concrete cars. Fifteen, applicable authorization to advertise replacement with brick curbs sidewalks and driveways around city hall. Sixteen, applicable amendment of resolution one two two. Twenty four, with again, moving in from general public in Jersey. Seventeen, authorized purchase by police department for software equally cloud from Michael's right this time. Eighteen, applicable order contract and Taylor L O C. Nineteen, applicable order contract. Twenty, applicable authorization to advertise for furniture. One, applicable order contract with limited performance of cycle and energy services. And the three, applicable ordinance of resolution two two to twenty five, with both ending favor and pain. Twenty four, applicable order contract with self maintenance of the corporation. Twenty five, applicable order contract with previous ability advisory group F L C. Twenty six, applicable order contract with E I Associates by the text and the inverse P A. And the resolution zero eight two fifty six ordinance requested by the final engineer, engineer. During, applicable resolution to encourage the door extension, but before it will see no, 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 no. Then we have these two members to the council.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Here.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Here.
Council President Escobar.
Here.
Please be advised that the notice of departments of the public being had been applied with and satisfied that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and handle of all public news of the news of the council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just today, we had the opportunity to have a beautiful opening of the Banquita Valenti Community School. So in that same thinking, I just want to pause to go and pray for kids who are set to start school tomorrow that they have a fruitful at least one year. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda. Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan. Council President Escobar.
Yes.
Madam President, has the correspondence have been delivered to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. At this time, I will listen to the floor to our city attorney, Mr. Divisionary.
Uh, thank you, Madam Council President, members of council. Uh, I'd like to be an advisory representative of the council and the public. City council meetings shall be conducted in a courteous manner. Citizens and council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free of slander and threats of violence. Sufficient warnings may be given by the council president at any time during the remarks. In any event, any individual shall violate the rules of decor. The council president may then cut off comment or debate. Any person making offensive, insulting, threatening, personal, slanderous, or obscene remarks, or who becomes boisterous, or who makes threats against any person, or against public order and security while at the council meeting, shall be removed at the direction of the presiding officer from further audience at the meeting. A speaker may also, who may also be an employee of the city, is reminded that their conduct at the meeting will be held to those standards expected of city employees, the failure of which may result in disciplinary action against that employee by the city. Ex officio sergeant in arms in the room. Carry out all orders and instructions given to him or her by the presiding, upon instructions of the council president. It shall be the duty of the police officer present to eject any such person from the room or place him or her under arrest or both.
Class.
Will be advised by the city clerk when five minutes have expired. Speakers are requested to conclude their remarks at that time. The public portion of the meeting is intended to afford to express opinions and to bring important matters to the attention of the council. Though they may, there is no requirement that the council answer questions or engage in debate at any council meeting. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Now, um, let's continue the hearing tonight, um, hopefully we'll see according to the hearing list. We have ordinances and ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick. Before we, um, open the floor, will you come on some of these orders?
Sure. So, um, the salary, uh, the forty thousand dollar your salary has not been increased since nineteen ninety one. Uh, that was also what's in office, uh, came to office. The ordinance proposes an increase dollars annually. The city's current salary ordinance provides salary range for the mayor with a minimum of ninety thousand dollars. Over the years, uh, the mayor has chosen to waive the increase and has remained at this forty thousand dollar amount. The proposed salary increase keeps pace with inflation, resulting in a present day value comparable to the nineteen ninety one salary. City officials conducted an analysis of the cities across the state with mayors similar responsibilities. Even with the proposed increase, the project would still spend considerably less for the position compared with major cities like Elizabeth, Trenton, Hoboken, and others, as well as such other middlesex county municipalities, including Van Boy, Woodbridge, and Edison. The salary review comes at a time, and municipal taxes have remained relatively flat for recent years, fueled by more than six billion dollars in redevelopment. That is important to office. Revenue from redevelopment is used to enhance local neighborhoods and help ensure a steady municipal tax rate to your assets.
Thank you. Thank you. Does any of my fellow council members have any comments or questions before we get to the floor? We get to these orders.
Well, I would just like to say one thing. Uh, this man is greatly underpaid, and it's a long time coming. I hope that in the future we do the same thing for the city council, because I believe it's sad council, as we do with yours. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we are preparing to open the public hearing of these ordinance only. We have up to five minutes per person, one time off. Any members of the public wishes to speak on these ordinance only, please push the council this time.
Hi, yes, for due to, I just heard Mr. Egan making a comment on, I guess we're talking about number one, where electrical fit of issue, about, uh, is that what he's just commenting on, saying he's been a great, great mayor?
I didn't, I said, we're commenting on the first ordinance, that's what we're on right now, yes.
Oh, no, what I, I just heard you.
I'm not into having a dialogue with you as well. Thank you.
Oh, oh, wow, you can't answer the questions?
I said the mayor, I said the mayor is a long term overdue for a raise, is what I said.
Well, okay, that's all I asked you. You're gonna start, you're gonna start something, that's all I asked you.
Let's continue. What have you said, you have a question about a specific ordinance that we are talking about?
Well, yes, I will say, due to where, yes, I don't think he deserves no fifty thousand dollar raise, due to where what? All he ever does is show up with the groundbreaking, due to where what? What ribbon cutting, what, when he's really needed around the city, is he available to see, to see anything? Does he listen to people, what going on here? I've been here forty six years, New Brunswick wasn't that this then? Why is it now, due to where, just like I said on the news the other day? What do I see with Mayor Cahill, what racism? Going people by the color of their skin, due to where, and like I said, you didn't really say that, wow, he's your friend, and he's good, and please, if he wants to be good, let me see him like all the other mayor. Colin Park, when they come to the councilman meeting, the mayor there, uh, other ones, what? Instead of just showing up or what? Time, time to look good to cut a ribbon, time to do this for groundbreaking, what, whatever? But like I said, New Brunswick's going to see a change.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel, next.
Good evening, Council, Charlie Prattville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today.
I know you tried to.
I appreciate the explanation before you have the hearing, and I do have some additional questions. I brought this up at the last meeting, that the mayor, at least at one point, was getting a six thousand dollar automobile stipend or mileage stipend for the use of his personal vehicle. Is that still the case, and will that continue, uh, if this ordinance is approved?
These are rules, we do have that.
That's a matter separate of the ordinance, and I'd have to look into that.
Thank you. So separate, please.
Okay, also, for the second straight meeting, I'm bringing it up, I asked that it be looked into and, uh, find out, under what authority? Find out, under what authority, uh, that additional six thousand dollars has been paid to the mayor.
Yeah, question.
Question. I, I do want to, uh, also note that the effective date for this raise is September fifteenth, twenty twenty three. And I don't think that that is a best practice. I think if this were, you know, the, the U.S. Congress, they would be prevented from getting a raise in the middle of their term. Um, typically, you know, when a job is put up for election, the people who run for it understand what the, uh, compensation is before they run for it, and then, you know, they're putting it out there, they're willing to serve for the term. Uh, and, you know, basically, you know, with this term, with this mayor, uh, we're seeing now, uh, potential increase, you know, more than double of the salary. Um, I don't see why this couldn't just be put into effect for the next term. Uh, is there a reason that the council didn't do that? Why not?
I think that the mayor has been waited a long time for this, and well deserved to pay. And I think that why we, we're just waiting out for some reason, right? I think it's the only one way we can afford forty thousand dollars for a job back to be doing. Uh, that's probably the only way to get a job back in the house, so I need to just wait to start it right now.
Okay, well, I think that.
Just on what you're saying, but I believe this is the time to do it.
I, I, I know there was some allusion to the salary ordinance and the range, uh, having, you know, the mayor already in that range, already in the salary ordinance, and I'll note that when you adopted that ordinance, I came to this microphone, I spoke about it, and I asked why, uh, you know, the, the, the mayor was being put into that range and was told, you know, basically, don't worry about it, he, he, you know, uh, he's not asking for a raise, so it's not gonna make a difference. Um, what changed now? Has, had the mayor put in a request for this raise?
No.
No, so this was the council independently deciding to do this? Was this the council or one of your professionals?
That's the diverse, that's something that if the council is the one looking at this at this point, so and we are the ones that put in the mayor that's looking at this, we could request a study for probable orders of counts, and I think that at this time, it's reasonable what we ask.
Right, I just want to understand the order of events, I think it should be public. Um, you know, did you request that study after getting a request to change the salary?
Do you want to put this in the first picture that are in that?
Well, thank you. That, that, I, I just want to understand the origin of it, so you're telling me that the council came up with the idea to change this?
We not getting told even the staff under council of office and need a study, and what would be the best way to do this, and this is the result of it.
Okay, um, I, I, I understand that, and I did, um, want to ask if anybody has any information, you know, um, does anyone know if the mayor intends to complete his current term?
No, I think it's for that. I don't.
You're not sure if he does?
I'd say I do not have an answer.
Okay. That would be pertinent information, uh, you know, he's the salary, but, uh, you know, I for one wish the term that he, that he was elected to. And, uh, I guess finally.
We are exploring this time.
Okay, I would just say.
Do the same thing. With stuff. See if it's something that is feasible.
Okay, I would just suggest on that point, you know, word to the wise, it should be a best it should be a forward looking change, if you do decide to go in that direction. Um, it, it, it looks bad otherwise, so I, I do appreciate you hearing me out, thank you for answering my questions.
Anybody else from the public? Can we sort of, we should address?
New York.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
Okay, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, chapter seventeen zoning, chapter seventeen point oh four, zoning district. Over the zones, this is regarding the landing lane over there. Do you have any questions or comments before this ordinance? And before we go into it, um, Mr. Dominguez, can you give us a few, some of this?
Sir. Um, so this ordinance, uh, if you may recall, we referred this a couple months back to the planning board. The purpose of it was to allow these two single family homes that exist on George Street near the Landing Lane Bridge, they are currently zoned R seven, which only allows for mid-rise and high-rise apartment buildings. And so any addition, if they wanted to put a pool, a shed, a garage, those would technically be expansions of a non-conforming use and might necessitate they would allow them, in effect, to be able to do those things with their property, uh, without needing to do that, while also, uh, keeping the underlying zoning for the R seven for, should, should in the future that end up being the end result of those properties. Uh, but this allows the current owners and property managers to do as they see fit within reason to do things that are typical for single family, uh, properties.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. At this time, we're going to open the floor for the hearing of this ordinance only. You have up to five minutes per person on the time off. Does anybody from the, from the bridge to address the council, these particular ordinance, and?
Hi, yes, Danielle, for our first question, I have to say, wow, these two houses that, uh, Mr. Dominguez has mentioned on, are they friends of any city council members or Mayor Cahill's? For friends, due to where, I know how you put things through to have things done, done around here, whenever they're your buddies, where you won't allow other people to do it, due to where, wow, it builds, builds, extends the same thing you put through before. Wow, what for, for, for what, a second house to be on Somerset Street in the backyard? Wow, because he, he works here with city council, so please tell me, are any of these two owners, are they friends of yours? What zoning boards for this to go through, due to where all you do is, like I said, do things and look out for your values?
Any other questions?
Can I just get an answer? Are any of them your friends?
I have an answer, but.
Well, good, because I, I honestly, that's the way I see it, due to where you did the same thing, what, for three fifty one Somerset Street? Wow, you wouldn't let no other owner put in, and you'll hear me up at, when I come at the comment, I want to make sure this owner pays, pays the price for, where you allow him to put a backyard, another, another house built in his backyard. I will speak with that in common, let's see if he pays the price for, but enough of you guys looking out for your buddies, letting them do illegal, uh, other things where you won't let other people do.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Anybody else from the public of this particular ordinance?
New York.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan. Council President Escobar.
Yes, we have ordinance number three. In order, ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, title ten, citizen traffic, chapter ten, control of traffic and road regulations. Trucks over forty tons, this is in reference to Paul Robinson, over some, or? Any of the, my fellow council members have any questions, any comments on these particular ordinance?
Any?
Have you? Have you? At this time, if I could have, uh, Mr. Dominguez, to just hear a brief follow-up.
Certainly, um, so in this case, with this ordinance, uh, we've gotten complaints about, uh, at the dead end of Paul Robeson Boulevard near North Brunswick, by the cemetery, uh, of a, uh, repair shop that is parking school buses that they're working on on the street. Uh, right now, the municipal ordinances prohibit those vehicles from being parked there overnight, but there is a gap where it's not technically illegal to leave them parked during the day. Uh, this ordinance would prohibit them from having those vehicles parked on our city streets on Paul Robeson Boulevard twenty four seven, so that they do not leave the vehicles that they're working on uh, on our city streets, uh, being detrimental to that neighborhood in terms of aesthetics, in terms of, uh, possible risk of robbery, in terms of inoperable vehicles on the road, et cetera. So that's what the end result of this would be, that those vehicles would no longer be able to be parked there, should they park there, the police and parking authority would be empowered to issue tickets and potentially tow them. I don't know if it would come to that, or if that would reach that level, but, uh, it would no longer be legal during the day, because it's currently illegal at night, all right?
Well, we, uh, I will provide a situation with the shop.
Uh. I will, I will send them a letter, should the council act favorably tomorrow.
I think that it would be a surprise, I would be happy to be asked this time, thank you. At this time, if any favorite of the public wishes to address the council in this ordinance only, please approach the microphone. So we're done?
New York.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Castaneda. Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Council, by the city of New Brunswick, the county of Jersey, thirty six, and now real estate, and play for the cost of all. Mr. Dominguez, if you could give a brief, um, explanation of this one, short, hesitant of the public, I know.
Um, in this ordinance, there are various items, we have a list. And part, part of this payment will come from the Open Space Trust Fund, put a down payment, and then acquisition of a fire truck, a one point five meter ladder truck, and other fire foot knees for battery powered traction, etc., so.
Any of my fellow councilmen have any questions or comments on these ordinance? We're going to open the public hearing of this ordinance only. We have up to five minutes per person, one time off. If any member of the public wishes to address the council on this ordinance only.
Yes, Charlie Prattville, once again, um, I'm curious about the Wolfson Park. Uh, it was mentioned some of the funds will come from Open Space Trust Fund, is that on top of, or is that part of the four point three seven, um?
Sure, that is, uh, the, the park projected cost is four point three seven, four, four point, that would be for the five percent down payment, so park cost four point three seven oh, plus the five percent down payment come from the Open Space Trust.
Okay, so on top of, got it. And I'm curious, uh, who owns the, the land right now? Is it still the county, or the park authority, or the city?
It's the county's land.
I see, so I guess I'm just a little curious about the arrangement then. If the county is gonna continue to own it, why is the city going to borrow four point three seven million dollars to make the park? Uh, can the county help us with that, if they're gonna continue to piece that's gonna be executed, helping?
I'm not sure.
Right, and, and why not just, you know, buy the land from the county? It's taken some time, it's taken some time, and I'm just, you know, examining what the, what the deal is to, to make it happen. Can you confirm the?
Maybe for that.
And the other part?
Maybe for that.
And the other part?
We talked about painting, very specific, um, you didn't mention that, you just mentioned, uh, and we just mentioned again, Mr. Dominguez, say, meaning of painting.
West Side was Teller Drive, Florence Street, Ball Street, Baldwin Street, and Seaman Street. And if there is, um, if there are streets that we should be aware of, I'd be glad, glad to make it as well.
Okay, that's what we want to find out, because the streets are my way. So they need to be, since the city owns one of the streets out here.
We should, we should, we should talk about, by, by all that.
Robeson Village, Bourbon Court, Jennings Court, Gatlin Court.
So inside the complex.
Inside the complex. They say these are city streets now, since we got a way in and a way out, that the city owns the streets now. So that's what I'm trying to find out, if somebody gonna come through and do those streets too, because they get bad.
Okay, we just got the front.
President, if you don't mind, uh, Tony Hajar, city engineers here, would you mind just giving him your information, and we could connect offline?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regent. Anybody else on this specific ordinance?
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, due to where I'm familiar with some of these streets, a lot of the streets sound due to where these are over the area in like, not many, maybe close to the school. A lot of these streets that you're talking about next, uh, maybe a couple of blocks where the new school is going? Would you repay, repaying the roads?
These two, yes.
Well, due to where, like I said, and I showed Mr. Valente Saturday, he's not here, due to where, wow, the county just repaid the road on Jersey Avenue, but due to where what? The city didn't do their part in making sure the owners did the curves. No curving was done, due to where the vehicles are parking, double parking, how do you expect the school to open tomorrow?
Is that where people, you could just hold on to that at the public, public park?
So, so please tell me, why did you tell me to hold on to mine, due to where I'm talking about streets next?
You need to move with this ordinance.
And excuse me, did what, what, not no disrespect to the other lady, but wow, did it did anything, like I said?
Again? Can you hold that for the next, oh, please, Tony? Thank you. You know what? Mine, she's, she has to go, she was being.
I didn't say nothing to you in person, so like I said, I can whisper whatever I said. You don't have to change anything?
Thank you, Danielle, I'll see you up in next week, thank you.
I'll, I'll see. Bless that, honey, I do get a blessing for being here, speaking the truth of you guys. I just said that they don't, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwiss? Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes, we have ordinances on first reading, we have ordinance to grant.
Move the ordinance setting down, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, five thirty, PM, same date to be advertised. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwiss? Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, we have ordinance to enable the right to operate businesses of the city of New York City, titled ten vehicles in traffic, stopping, standing, parking, no parking at any time, we are adding.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwiss? Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
It brought the block, it's a great activity that has been done for the past, this is the second year, the third year, second year, that Captain Ollie has been doing it in conjunction with the in the city where they gave out book bags to our kids. They had a deal of fun. They have, we gave them hot dogs. And it was a great activity and over a thousand, the last time I heard was even over a thousand book bags that given, were given to the, to the community. So kudos to Captain Ollie and the public department who was there with our kids. So those are my comments for now. Anybody else from the council wishes to address, say something before going to the public portion? So at this time, we are going to prepare to open the meeting for a public comment. You have up to five minutes. One person gets one person, one time off. Any member of the public wishes to address, speak to the council? Any public comments you'd like to say?
Good evening, Chris Ryan, Art and Brosen. It's easy to come up here as a member of the public and nitpick and to criticize. And a couple of months ago, I made some comments about the closure of George Street. And while I stand by most of those comments, I want to walk back just a couple of them. And that now that we've reached almost full, that Rutgers has returned, that there's a little bit more population, if you will, using the street, it seems much more appropriate to have that type of outdoor seating in place than it did when it was hurriedly and inappropriately rushed into being put into place during the middle of the summer. I think that if it becomes a vibrant meeting place for the rest of the season, then I think it will do well for the city, and I support it. I'd like to see in the future, a little bit more effort in making its presentation consistent from Albany up through to Bayer. Right now, it's a little bit haphazard and it just looks a little too kitschy, if you will, for what I hope the city and what the council is really looking for. So I do have some suggestions that I'm not going to bring up now, but there's obviously alternative ways to make that a really usable, friendly area. One of the ways may be, aside from the actual construction and how it's set up, is trying to limit the use of scooters on the sidewalk. Maybe finding a compassionate way to guide some of our panhandlers and sleepy people from the sidewalks in a way that best helps their mental and physical health. Because leaving them there on the street serves no benefit to anyone. The fact that in some cases, they're violating the panhandling law that this city wrote after it lost its case to the guy that was in the wheelchair, especially in terms of aggressive manhandling within 25 feet of certain areas, that's not even being enforced, and it could be in a compassionate way, of course. So I look forward to seeing how the city market expands on this. The car shows have been a little bit under attended by the car owners, but still fun to see the street available to the city and to see a few of the cars that were there, so I appreciate that. And I'd like to thank our police department, our fire department, our Department of Public Works, and all the municipal employees that answer their phones every day and help guide us with the questions and concerns that we have. As I've also said before, I've always found that when you approach them in a reasonable, polite, and thought-out way, they're always willing to help you out regardless of what they may or may not have going on in their personal lives or at work. So I appreciate that, and I hope that you can pass that along. So with that, a conclusion.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Bradenville. I do want to start by correcting the record. At your last meeting, I made some comments about program, the telehealth program at the Housing Authority. And of course, Councilman Kessinger corrected me and pointed out that the program did get up and running apparently in the spring. I had some bad information, so I wanted to correct the record and apologize to everyone. I think it's important to do that when you're wrong. I also did bring up a development project, the Ori Tower, and I was pleased to learn that the tower is actually slated to have 20% affordable units. And so that was another thing I was mistaken about. I haven't reviewed my comments yet, but I did want to just clear that up in case I misled anyone. But I do have some other matters to question you about. I hope you can appreciate that some of them are things I've asked about before and I'm still waiting for answers. But first is the hiring of Anthony Jones Jr. to the fire department. I had asked who did the background check on Mr. Jones, and you told me, I believe, that you would look into that and try to get me an answer. Do we know who did the background check? Was there a background check done on Mr. Jones?
Um, who does the background, every employee has the background checks done, right? Who does the background checks for?
The fire department does the background checks in our process.
So they do the fire departments?
Right, and which individual?
The fire director has a process that involves a number of officers through the process.
Can we find out who those folks are?
Probably with the director, but I will find out.
I appreciate that, and I do have a number of other pending questions on that matter. I think I made my point that it was very concerning to see someone who resigned from the police force in disgrace, rehired just a few years later despite pleading guilty to a violent assault. And, you know, that is the case with Mr. Jones Jr. And I think you're all been copied on my emails to Mr. Barron, seeking some answers about that and still waiting the answers. So I'm going to continue to bring it up and continue to try to get to the bottom of how that happened, because I think, you know, there are lessons that we can learn. I also wanted to ask about the police shooting. Does the council have any comments on the incident last Friday on Somerset Street?
Don't have any comments on that, especially because it's an active investigation. How we come to this time?
Okay.
How about the
proposed sorely needed traffic signal, Jersey and Hale, for the new school, any update on when that will be installed? Obviously, the students go, you know, the school opens tomorrow, it's not there.
Mr. Galacti is not here at the moment, or I believe anybody from the city, oh, the city?
Mr. Char, your name? Yeah.
Mr.?
The appointment for the signal should be arriving around September 20th, and will be installed, it's going to take about a week and a half.
So maybe by the end of the month, early October?
And it means that we have, we have some safety measures in place for the most police department, to remember the couple of kids in the example.
I recall the superintendent last time.
Yeah.
I recall the superintendent answered about this last time, that, you know, the organ was related, the department had the, like, problem to let out.
Right, right, and, yeah, I guess, the unanswered question is who's going to pay for that? The police directing traffic, are they just going to do that? Or is one of many parties responsible for the construction of the Lundy School?
I have a knowledge about there being over time, to be honest with you, so I have a knowledge of that.
Can we look into it since it is going to be a big job? And it's going to apparently be several weeks long, day in, day out. The taxpayers should know who's paying for it. So I have to ask about the Housing Authority. Nobody mentioned it. John Clark did resign.
Did he?
John Clark has resigned. He is no longer the executive director of the Housing Authority. It was effective September 1st. You were at the meeting last week when I asked in front of everybody, is he leaving? And nobody gave me a straight answer. Why do you think the board and Mr. Clark concealed the fact that he was just days away from retiring?
I am just learning from you that he resigned. I have no knowledge already that he had resigned. So what the board does and whether they, you know, have the issues to hear that information out, that's not my concern, but I would ask, because I was not aware. Thank you.
That certainly rubbed me the wrong way. I'll follow up after this.
Anybody else from the public?
Gretchen Spencer, too, Janice, thank you. That was on my mind, too. Who are we going to get to run the bill? One, Robeson Village needs to be tore down. There's so much mold and mildew out there. It's a doggone shame and I can't stand it. It's, the mayor came by my house. Will y'all tell somebody that that used to be built was built for black soldiers back in the day because they couldn't go to Camp Kellman? Them streets are named after black soldiers and some of their families are still living out there. Somebody needs, you know, put that up there and say that. That's why we want Robeson Village, especially Robeson Side, the part near the highway. Short's is bigger than Robeson Side. Their rooms are so small. One room got one bed, one window in it, and it's hot and it's doggone little apartments. They need to be made bigger. There's no place to store nothing. They were made for soldiers come in and out, not for people to really live in like we've been living. Short Side is bigger. I mean, much bigger with plenty of closets to store stuff and whatnot. But Robeson Village with the mold, the mildew, the pipes busting left and right on both sides. This place is almost 100 years old. It's older than me and I'm 70. I've been here since 1970. And they need to be tore down like everything else around this town. It's ridiculous what people, I got a lady out there now that's on the machine. They opened up apartment that the, the health department closed down because of the mold and the mildew that stuck her in it. She's on a machine. I've been trying to tell them at housing that she is a sick woman, she needs a new apartment, put her in another apartment. Robeson Side is too filthy with the air ducts, the dust when you turn the heat on that comes out, the dust that flies around in the windows, you can't breathe. I have COPD and asthma. When I, before I turn my heat on, before it gets cold, I turn it on. So all the dust and I go outside so the dust can come out. That's how bad it is. When you walk back in the house, your house is dusty from the dust. Underneath the buildings, the crossbones, people don't want to go up under there to fix nothing. People don't want to go under there to serve it either. Don't want to go under there to spray. With all the different kinds of insects, rodents, and everything else that is out there. I'm so blessed I can keep them out of my apartment, but a lot of people have them. I'm fighting ants. I'm fighting ants. Look, I've never fought ants before in my life. I feel like that movie back in the day called them. This is ridiculous. The ants are taking over these apartments. They're using cheap, they're giving us cheap stoves. We going back and, I mean, when we started, we going back. We doing worse than what we was back in 1970. They buying us cheap stoves, cheap refrigerators. Everything breaks. I don't have three stoves this year in one year. Because the stoves don't last that long. And it's ridiculous. We need to get somebody in there. Where John left, we need to either put Danny or somebody in there, because I'm getting ready to call North. And let Ryan, we get somebody in it that's going to listen to the people. They don't even want to answer my calls because like me, excuse my French, but I stay in their ass all the time like I used to when I come down here. And when I got problems, I come straight to y'all. When I got problems with them, I go straight to them. They don't even want to answer my phone calls no more. I'm about ready to start camping out in front of house. People can't call to get something fixed. We have to call like 20 times. It take a month or two to get a pipe or something fixed out there. And it's ridiculous. And since the one that got five different jobs and running five different places, they're left. You really can't get in touch with nobody. They don't want to answer your calls because they know it's me. They take their time. Then plus they call me back trying to be nice, which I need resolved. Because people are getting sick out there. People, kids are getting sick. They catching, and they got asthma, they catching everything. It needs to be tore down and refroamed. Bergen Court, Gathen Court, Jennings Court, and Carter Road. It needs to be made wider. It needs to be made bigger so the cars can come in and make a turn down the street without the trucks, UPS trucks having to ride over the curbs and stuff. Just to make a turn.
Thank you, sir.
And whatnot. So everything needs to be done. But somebody needs to get back to me about housing. I'm serious.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public who just addressed?
Good afternoon. My name is Anthony. I'm originally from Scataway. I opened up my LC A T C last year. For the last four years, I've been volunteering. I'm here in Brunswick, Elijah's Promise. I volunteer with a lot of other mutual aid groups. And I want to just thank the continued support of our president, Esther Markle, having kind of helped us with the situation that we deal with a couple of months ago where we had a president out who was facing homelessness, but you guys in touch with social services, and now he is in a home. So I want to also highlight the great successes that we've had from being the bridge of the voices for the people that have a difficult time advocating for themselves. And I'm kind of here to represent them and to push their voices forward. And all the successes that I have working with a lot of our groups here in Brunswick. We have a petition that we created a couple of days ago to continue to push this ball forward. It's a safe haven for Brunswick, and I know a lot of things have already been in the talk. We also volunteer with a lot of the rotating shelters here in Brunswick. So I also want to thank them for all their time, for what they're doing, for a lot of people that are experiencing a life without home and also a life experiencing with a lot of substance use disorders and things like that. And which we have a lot of success in using the approach of harm reduction to meet people where they're at and kind of not give them that advice or not to judge people, but to actually care for them and to continue to encourage us to treat people with compassion for how they are experiencing living life with substitutes and living life outside. And it's testament, I know there's a lot of stuff that's been going on around, like the Unity Square, Easter Park, Rims in the area. And I'm just using my voice to continue to push the ball forward and let you guys know that there is a petition that will be going around to kind of push the ball forward, just to try to see who's real like comrades in this and finding ways that we're noticing the gaps within our current programs that are helping people, a lot of people are at capacity. So if we're able to develop more mutual aid groups through the grassroots organizations to kind of fill in the gaps of transportation, fill in the gaps of people using like their cell phone. We've been providing food, water, and clothing for people to treat them in the interim of all the processes that it takes to get sex and need housing, to get in contact with like social services and things like that. And it's really successful because we are creating a lighthouse in the community. It's a safe spot so that way people can come and we can be and we can at least start with respect. So that way from there, we can continue to exchange knowledge of the resources that are around. So we've been collecting a lot of resources out of the, the rural community street teams. It's a great example of how they employ the people of their town to take care of the people of the town. The PAX Hill Collective can do like homeless checks for, for communities that have been kind of infiltrated, not infiltrated, but you know, like police don't do what they got to do. What we're finding is that a lot of people are suffering a lot of like trauma due to the unjust of everything that's going on. So we're looking to create time and space to seem to have a conversation about what we need to do to be of that bridge, of meeting people where they're at and treating people with the kindness and the human dignity that they all deserve and then providing resources in the interim as they're experiencing life, doing what they're going to do. That's not going to stop. But what we need is just more conversation about what we can do as a mutual grassroots group. So we started by just using our voice, just to ask for, just to say thank you first for taking this time. And then we have a petition to try to send y'all the link. So everybody's voice kind of heard for to see how we can fill in these gaps and kind of understand, because just like a lot of people just don't understand what's going on. So once we have that conversation of respect, we exchange the knowledge of what's already going on, we kind of assess what groups are already at capacity and what can't happen anymore due to that capacity and then fill that in with the innovation of love and compassion from like mutual aid groups. We get like volunteers, Rutgers students involved to continue to do like homeless checks here in Brunswick. Because that's something that we've all noticed is something that's needed. So I just want to come here today just to let you guys know that we're going to continue to try to figure this out together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
The petition, I did read through that this morning. And I have a question. Where did you pull all of the statistics and information and numbers that you have? I didn't see any, you know, any sources.
That's a great question. I have from the NJHFA, the New Jersey Counts. Let's see what else we have in there.
And also it seems to me like the primary focus of that, although it gave a lot of information, surrounded by you want a structure where people can come and stay for free. Is that correct? That seemed like the primary focus of this petition, outside of the information.
Yeah, I want to, it's like Unity Square does a great job. I host like Code Red, Code Blues and things like that. That's right there. That's an opportunity that we can have to continue the conversation about things that we could continue to work on, to make it accessible for people. Because like even today, I'll do like outreach. Nobody's going to go there because it's not like, it's not welcome. And we need to work on that. There's other links on like inhomeless.org that we pulled from. But if you, if you look at the petition, the links, the numbers when you click them on, they'll open up to other links.
All right, thank you very much.
Have you been, when you were mentioning some of the places, have you been working with the homeless navigator from that installation at Unity Square? You've been working most of the time. I see you share some of the things that you have seen, that partnership that you're looking for, right? Community involvement and that can work together. So I think that'd be a good partner for you to have a conversation, to see what have they seen, right? What are the trends, what's going on, and if there's good ways, I just wanted to know that you have been working with them.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else from the public who just addressed the council?
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Walter Harris. Not this, where I'm at. Not new to this, fellow Charlie. I'm just here to speak for the sleepy people and the panhandlers. And that bill, oh, I'm sorry, that petition that was announced, we wrote by me, and I worked with all the organized, for organized and for community to speak up for people that are dead. So there's been many untimed attacks, and we're speaking to not any of the safe haven. The safe haven is a reflection of the Homes Bill of Rights that's been passed in New York, which has the second high population in the nation, right, second to California. Now, where we are, where we are at this point, the Homes Bill of Rights in S2429, according to a Sunday newspaper, that the Code Group, the Code Red bill is not law yet. We are facing out of the summer going into the winter, but we're tired of playing Code Red and Code Blue. We would like to play Code Perp, which is year-round. Because the people that we're trying to advocate for, like I worked with Eric H. Chandler, Elijah's Promise, this young gentleman spoke, has worked with me and also in terms of harm reduction, before they knew, anyone was getting high that I brought them to these people. And now these people are behind the door at the Infected Disease Department at Eric H. Chandler. We have two, we have two public health interns, and we're fighting every day to go to the public, the public, the public library for the center of town, a very historic place. Doctor Bell, you know, the library director, Ray Warming, being very tolerant of them sitting on there. This young gentleman who's speaking, that's speaking right now, in 2018, when there was no Code Blue bill, I spoke out and were able to run an opponent Code Blue shelter right across the street in the old Magyar Bank. And it was very successful. We had cameras in the back, the whole nine. Then following that, because people were not feeling comfortable with the militarized version of the shelter, that is the real issue. The people do not feel comfortable to go see Ms. Crawford at Unity Square from coming home. They don't, they don't feel comfortable to go see her. Because there's people around the block there, there's a lot of things going on. We're literally using interfaith communities, old supporters from time to time again. Everybody's fusion organizing, but enough is enough when we're explaining ourselves about how joyful it is to be having a sidewalk open and be outside during COVID, but these people have been outside before COVID, during COVID and after, and they should have a basic fundamental right. And that basic fundamental right we're asking for is the right to shelter. And not only the right to shelter, but in a controlled manner where you actually have a serious dialogue with all these organizers in the room. Because I've actually worked in 2009 with the Zand Finston when the own, the Catholic Church on 18 Nielsen denied us to use the upstairs. So we had to only take 15 people by the river, and we called the Mexican Company, to come down and take care of 150 people, not 15. So it's way more than 74 people, according to your point in time count. That was the resource, the people was the point in time count. And if you need any more information, you can look at the National Union of Homelessness, the National Coalition to End Homelessness. You could speak with the president of the National Union of Homelessness if you'd like to. But firstly, we'd like to have a conversation about human rights and dignity for these people, not dignity in the form that when they are taking showers, because this gentleman, and I let the public know, I called the CDC on the City of New Brunswick. And when I called the CDC on the City of New Brunswick, they raised it to a federal level and forced them to play, to run shelter because they're going to run showers. There was still no showers for anybody. We were taking people to, in 20 below weather, we're taking people to a forum church, a home park, let them get showered, let them get clothed. And when we ran our shelter, I can bring up homes to testify to that because I don't want to take up any more of my time. But this is a very serious issue. It's a public health issue. And the Department of Health is on call, we're working directly with vital strategies, the same under as New Jersey Harm Reduction. I'm already in the room on a continuum of care. So I asked it to take shot of New Jersey and New Jersey Nonprofit Corporation very seriously and reach out to me because I'm going to speak on behalf of the sleepy people and the panhandlers because a lot of my friends that I've been advocating for, just to try to get them housing, they're not eligible for. So there's a lot of barriers that we can work together to meet. Because I am a team player, but I'm not going to take injustice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public who just addressed the council?
Hi, I'm Brittany, Listen Avenue. I'm just speaking for the people in the audience and people that watch at home because I don't expect you guys to help at all. But a lot of these people, they see me come up here and speak and advocate for people, especially women. And Thursday, I had a coworker, a male coworker, put his hands on me, scratched my face, burned me with a marijuana blunt under my arm. And everybody watched and didn't do anything. So he didn't just put his hands on me once, he put his hands on me twice. And then when the police were called, they told me that I was the victim of a crime. And, but nobody got arrested, and everything is on video, and no, once again, nobody did anything. So that just goes to show, to prove to you that, you know, the city supports discrimination, you know, support retaliation, you support harassment, and I beg you to look into this. You said you had people look into it twice. This is the same person that I have on written paper in which the city has a copy of about, you know, their disrespect and disregard for women in the workplace. Well, I should say women, because I'm the only woman driver at this company. So I don't expect you guys to help or take care. It's just the principle of, you know, you know, I was trying to make it seem like I come up here and I make things up and you don't know what I'm talking about, but there's the proof. I'm pretty sure that's part of the reason why Thomas Valenti didn't want to show up today. Anything, information that I needed in regards to what we're going to do about this situation? You guys pushed me away, or I have to reach out to the city. The city hasn't reached out to me. The shop store, the union, nobody's reached out to me. I haven't had anybody, Michael Duelis or anybody, if it was negative, you reach out to me. Haven't had anyone reach out to me. I have to reach out to people and then it's he said, she said. Well, this one said, come to work and be paid and just be quiet. This person said, you know, don't worry about it. You're the person that started it. But everything's on camera. I asked for the camera footage in a nice fashion and tried to follow the champagne man. You got disrespectful and said, oh, you got to have your lawyer subpoena, which will eventually happen. And just for recording purposes, so that you guys can't say that there is no video, because that happened to me in the past before, when the supervisor tried to attack me. The video just disappeared, but there is a video. And I applied to the Oprah Act for that video. So hopefully you guys do the right thing and provide that video so that I can take it to the news and do what I have to do to make sure that you guys get exposed. so that I can take it to the news and do what I have to do to make sure that you guys get exposed for what's going on and the workplace. I work for the city. I live in this city. I should be able to come here and express myself how I feel very openly without, you know, caring. When I come to the meeting, there's a way that the city employees have to carry themselves and come in here and speak. And I've heard Tom Valenti curse a veteran out outside of his window and that spoke at this very mic in his city vehicle. I'm pretty sure you're not telling that to him. You know, I don't understand how many times I've come up here and told you, you really need to look into this. This is serious. You know what I mean? These guys are angry. They're not being paid properly. The garbage is becoming overwhelming and now the students are back. So you know the garbage is about to amplify. These guys are on edge. Can you blame them? You know, you guys let another worker steal a garbage truck and he stills working there. He didn't get suspended. There's an open investigation. Nobody has any answers. But when somebody put their hands on me, nobody has answers. Just stay home and get paid and don't say anything and wait for somebody to give you a chance to give your statement. They asked everyone else for a statement, but nobody's called me. I don't understand.
Speak on it.
So my thing is that, am I supposed to feel safe? You know, what if it was your daughter, your granddaughter, your sister, your, you know, whatever, you got upset about dating? But where are you gonna get upset when they're disrespecting a woman? You're a woman. You know what I mean? This is saying, you may not like me or the color of my skin, but I'm telling you, they have to learn to be respectful in the workplace because the world is changing. The women are, are the new black, like, you know, they're gonna come here and wanna apply for the city and work for the city. And what are you gonna tell them? Oh, just if they put their hands on them, just stay home and be quiet until somebody calls you for a statement. And then somebody gets here and tells them, yeah, put her down as a suspect. So that I can't get the paperwork that I need to push this thing forward. Because they already know that's retaliation for what me coming down here standing up against any one of you in here. It's just that, it's a shame that it had to get to this point.
Um, we should do this. I know this is at first with cities handling the situation.
Hello, everyone. Hi, I'm Deanne today. Bringing some energy in the room and getting some uplifting people, you know, feel good energy, you know. We have friends, we have challenges.
You thank you.
Barbara Sutton.
Barbara, thank you.
The problems that are at hand, obviously they are, you know, in publicity. I think one thing that could be looked into is that when you are pandemic and all the changes and the generations coming in, right after generation after generation. I think that, you know, those that are that have already, you know, been deceased have accepted for the traditional trusted, you know, stipulation as far as an inheritance noted as like income. So it's like and you're not approved because you might have such over, you know, over for the year. And I think that presents a lot of challenges. For the ladies that I believe, you know, men that are in domestic violence, I think another challenge is through the rubbish programs. You know, you have a whole lot of lack of contributions for those that actually don't speak up about their problems. And when you finally do, and you finally have the energy and you finally get up to have a voice, to be in court, in the courtroom, to make a decision as far as any orders as concerned. I think that should be like something to be implemented as far as like the court procedures or reparations. But I think that when you actually go through the whole route and get some kind of response, why are you not getting benefits? Because you have an open court date that has nothing to do with the case. And so you go through the whole changes and you get no, you might get a little counseling or you might get a little bit of support lightly. But then, you know, maybe temporary placement, but if you have an inheritance coming that you're not approved for, that you can't access and then you need benefits for a domestic bond to get out of your situation to be in a more better situation. So that when you get your inheritance, you might have power with an estate to actually take money out of, you know, full mineral rights and full air rights that go from Princeton to Harlem Park and Route twenty seven all the way to Milltown, which is something I'm working on right now, and the landfills. So you know what challenges, challenges through that process is something that challenges through that process is something that, you know, shortly and nicely is a problem because then people get aggravated and they shun away certain meetings and things that need to take place in order for change to happen. So I really appreciate, you know, you all getting here today and everyone here present, just as my contribution to say something and I would like to have like a personal response, if at all, like maybe like a one on one or maybe an email or maybe some kind of reference from the appropriate party. My email is m a z e y e z seven seven at gmail dot com. Maze eyes seven seven at gmail dot com. And furthermore, as far as the challenges, as far as harm reduction and helping people that have been in burnt up apartments and all the domestic violence cases and all the challenges of the RWJ and the things that we're going through with the heroes in our town and our people that we honor. I believe and I feel like if, if people, you know, a movement to contribute, maybe like something outside of government, websites or arenas, like maybe a YouTube or more of like a social media, like outside of like the general Facebooks, like maybe it's someone like, if there were groups to get together so that people can reach out to groups individually, like Roundtable, you know, like, you know, these, this, these some more things are personally handled instead of on YouTube.
Thank you.
May all be blessed.
Thank you. Anybody else for the public wishes to address the council?
Good afternoon. I'm the latest reporter with New Brunswick today. I did want to follow up with my request per se from the last meeting with the trash cans. If we can get some put out on Railroad Avenue, um, to Dan Street, where there's some Seaton Street, Andy Street, just with the new school opening. We do get a lot of trash in usual. And some of those trash, you know, end up blowing into the corner of the lease where my family lives. And we have equipment to clean and also maintain the property and also the grass that our girls and the tracks and, you know, but still some of those things get caught up in there and we end up with citations and the landlord pays for it, you know, we do get follow up letters to clean. And it just becomes very inconvenient that trash that is not caused by us ends up in our property and has to be a daily maintenance. So we just want to request, you know, it's kind of leasing trash cans be put there, especially with the school opening very closely. You know, it's something that my family looks forward to especially starting tomorrow as I have servants that will be attending that school. So, you know, I do share, you know, the same compliments of the new school and its name and the locations, but you know, there are still some concerns, especially since we've lived there for so long with the public safety. So, you know, that was one request. We hope that you can put some sort of trash cans there or at least, you know, bring that up to any city employee that does issue those citations, you know, to at least have that area acknowledged. That, you know, it is complicated to clean up on a daily basis or at least when they pass by and they find a truck. Because I assume they're not walking there daily to see if we're cleaning or not. You know, the one time that, you know, they do pass, it could be dirty. So that's one of the requests we have. The other one is recommendation, just like Rutgers has, you know, their own surveillance cameras located on certain poles. And they also have, I've seen at Johnson, Johnson's offices downtown, they have the blue, what we call panic bines, things like that, with cameras built in. I don't know if that's something the city will consider, but I feel like with the new school opening there and especially as far as things like that, parent teacher conferences occurring overnight. You know, it gets dark during winter. Our city poles with the lightens are, you know, incandescent. They are emitting some warm yellow color. They're not LED lights. You know, so there's not as bright. It's very dark in a sense of ways, you know, feel like at least having city on cameras operated or monitored live by police departments, you know, I feel like that might give peace of mind to the people living there and maybe a panic bind like I suggested, you know. I've seen many other cities put that up. They've had initially, you know, some issues where people just pressing on it, false alarms, things like that, you know, prosecuting those who do, you know, activate those binds and there's no real emergency. But I feel like maybe that's one way we can move forward to trying to keep the city feel safe. You know, we talked about all these situations going on, people who, that are not fortunate enough to have homes or boobs or housing or employment. So, you know, some of the issues, you know, at least for local residents that do live there, that do, you know, provide sometimes money to those people on our corners or sometimes, you know, for them at least just to not throw those trash or clean up or see some, if they see somebody, you know, trespassing into our properties, at least, you know, that's something our family does to support those homeless people on there. Just keep an eye and pick up some trash they might see or avoid doing that, you know. It's something temporary. Obviously, we do want to look for better solutions, but that's just, you know, one of my concerns. You know, working in the city, covering all this stuff, we see the good, the bad and the ugly, but that's just one of my requests personally. You know, to have those trash cans installed there and maybe, you know, fix the lighting systems outside the school. I've not seen it at night yet. I did love that the light lights up, you know, during the night, but I feel like the illumination for the area it is, I feel like it might be a little too dark for parents walking there, you know, during parent teacher conference or any events this school might try to pose, you know, after school hours and, you know, could pose a risk. So I feel like maybe having, you know, something similar to Rutgers with their cameras in their mountain poles and things like that. There are, when I think our sensors, I think I brought this up last time, on the intersection of French Street, M C M Street, nineteen Louis. I was told that they were not cameras, but instead some type of sensors that were there. Couldn't tell you honestly if they are, they are, you know, kind of in a sense of way, it does put a deter to people, doing things there. We've seen many things that just hope that maybe the city could look into that, create a conversation between your colleagues if that's an option, you know, to implement more safety and keep a peace of mind. Thank you.
I'm gonna, so what your concerns and recommendations, I'm going to also with Esperanza because I've done so many complain there, there are trash cans in the area. I know they have the lighting, you know, lights, maybe your story, so I'll show some of the things with them also because they have, they have some funding, right? I think that they put up a, with some of it, just so thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm aware of their initiatives. You know, it's just that sometimes I come up here and mention it, like last time I requested to clean the bricks of the Amtrak Bridge to cover the repairs. I did get approval from Amtrak Police to do it. Wednesday they reached out to the city and the police department. I think you guys were happy about it, but then I received a follow up from Amtrak stating that New Brunswick Police have told them that I was no longer authorized to do that, even though they just told me to leave a heads up.
So let me just follow, the thing I just talked about, follow in the conversation, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council?
Come on, man, it's gonna cost about fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, Jeff Harrow is from Laurel Place in New Brunswick. As you all know, recently I had the federal government intervene also. And I guess Tom's not here, but you know, had the DEP come here from Washington DC and from the state and the county hazmat on behalf of every citizen, hospital, patient, child, bird and fish in town. Because that diesel fuel's going right into the water cleaning plant. So that till the end of September, clean verbatim. Gasoline's natural, comes out of the ground. Both queued by the same end and took the blind queue that fell on the same sidewalk. It took eight months to get fixed. Well, where the hell were his parents? It doesn't even have a cane. But, you know, and also shutting out the window has been seen also. But at any rate, Aaron Brockovich, you know, it was before people disagreed with his opinion. But it's, you know, other than that, what else is going on in my street? Oh yeah, the main thing, there's clearly planes day, you can see it from outer space or at least from a drone, because you, you know, there's three people on my street running businesses. There's three coming out of one house. I mean, it's to the point where there was a funeral for a guy that's been there since nineteen seventy two. And there was no way for any of these, you know, people mourning to even mourn. I had F five fifty that was twenty feet long. And, you know, to have to bother the police for things that they don't want to be ordinance of, it's blocking people's driveway. And you know, standing in your way, you can't see through it. It's like a solid black thing. And on Oak Street, there's one guy, I'll give you all the names and addresses afterwards. I have no fears on it, care, because part of this is, do I point, because my constitutional rights are being infringed upon on like an hourly basis. And quite personally, I'm seeking help to avoid myself getting in trouble because I'm just getting sick and tired of all this stuff on Riddler. And I come back and someone's in my handicap spot halfway. There's five guys working on, everybody was drinking beers, banging on, which by the way, when the guy left, all four of the wheels, it was like watching a cartoon. So it's unsafe what's going on as well. It's nothing. And I just had to call back and say, you have to come back there because I'm gonna park on top of the car that's in my spot. And I'm gonna beat the hell out of everybody that's banging and waking my roommate up and everything else on my street. And then of course it came to that and that all, and then it was clear. And, you know, speaking of which, there's two trenches. I don't know who letting construction go on when no one's around. But in the same site that those people that spilled the diesel fuel trampled on, there's now a house. There's probably people working there now, which they're supposed to leave at six o'clock or seven o'clock. And the only thing stopping people from falling to their death is a toilet. Which I was told, I almost got a ticket for leaving my garbage can next to my house. There's a toilet on my sidewalk for the last three weeks. And, you know, at a certain weekend, there's people running in and out of said toilet. It was a holiday weekend. So for three days, there's no oversight of these gigantic, putting PVC pipe instead of the copper pipe that's supposed to be there from at work coming in from the streets. So it's, you know, there's like that cost a thousand dollars instead of two hundred there now. And, you know, all, all this stuff is, it's just, it's crazy what's going on. I mean, there's still more, we'll save more for the one at the end. You know, businesses, what else is going on over here? Guys were drunk. There's people all day long driving around, just drunk on my street. Oh yeah, there's a blind child that lives on my street. Aside from the fact that on the triangle between this and and Oak Street, you can't even see the yellow. It hasn't been painted since Angie died. It's, it's, you can't see it. It's grass. I called the police the other day. There's a yield sign. A minute of your class, page one of the driver's manual is you can't park past it. It's supposed to be yellow, the one or the other.